First thing is, I want to talk about, well, I just want to note, refer everyone to our website, the Concord Police Department's website on their official blog. The chief put out a statement Friday in response to some questions that we have received over the past few weeks in response to policing strategies here for the town of Concord. And specifically, I believe it's called the eight can't wait. And I think residents are encouraged to read the chief's statement. I think we've adopted many of those things locally. And he was very clear on the standards he holds for the Concord Police Department that I think would be, that I think other areas of the country are slower in embracing. So I want to commend the chief for his responsiveness to that feedback and also for making sure the department has, I should say, the department is progressive in these areas. And I think his statement shows that they certainly are. So one of the things that, we recently put out news and notices about this. It's that time of year and it's been dry. And so people, I think, are watering their grass. And so our consumption goes from, in the winter time, about 2 million gallons a day to 4 million gallons a day in the Hightower irrigation system. And CPW is putting out messages, really encouraging people to limit their watering to once per week. And I know that's difficult, especially if you're trying to establish grass. But we're asking for voluntary cooperation to help reduce the demand and reduce the pressure on supply. If voluntary measures aren't effective, then I think the Public Works Commission will look at mandatory restrictions. And I don't think we want to, I don't think they want to go there, but that is, excuse me, that is a possibility. And so, like I said, we did put out news and notices if people want to have, if people want better information, more detailed information from the website on the supply and demand issues and why it's important to conserve water on a voluntary basis. Some good news on Cambridge Turnpike, all of the utility work, utility relocation work has been done and the utility poles should be moved either this week or next. It's one of those moments where it seems small, but I can tell you that I was in a number of planning meetings before pre-COVID-19. And it was, it was iffy if that work was going to take, was going to go along on a, was going to go on quickly enough to keep the project on schedule. And it involved a number of utility companies, not least which is Comcast and Verizon, who we do not control. Obviously, we can, electrically, the light plant can, did their own things right away, including the broadband. But Verizon and Comcast upheld their end of the deal. And so that's, that important milestone, the project has been reached. So just an update on the CIO recruitment. We received a very robust number of applications from what seems to, I haven't reviewed the resumes. Our IT consultant and our acting IT director, Dave Wood, did go through, I think it was 94 applications, a very talented pool according to them. And we'll be continuing that process here in the coming weeks. But it was, we were concerned about going out in this kind of uncertain time. And the recruitment was effective in that we got a very strong, very strong group of applicants. So I did hear from Open Table and they wanted to make sure that I, you know, that I let the select board and the community know that the Lions Club has been really supremely helpful in managing the donations at Crosby's Market. They staff it daily. And so they've gone from a couple of pickups a week to 14 pickups weekly. And so the outpouring of support has really greatly helped Open Table provide that really essential service for the community. And so I want to thank both Open Table for their ongoing work, but also the Lions Club for pitching in in this really, in this really needed time. I, the, I don't have statistics at my disposal here. But I will say that according to Kerry Cronin, the curbside pickup has been extremely successful at the library. Again, that was a program that we prioritized when Phase Two began. And I think we are one of the, I think we were kind of ahead of the curve in terms of what other communities are doing. And it has been really successful. And so I want to commend the Board of Trustees for their support on that, as well as Kerry and her team at the library for really making that happen for the community. I remember I walked over a couple of weeks ago, before it was even officially online, just to check out how they had set up. And I mean, the soft opening had, I mean, there was a dozen people in the 30 minutes I was there coming up and getting things that they had been waiting for. And so I, I think it affirms the importance of the library in our community, but also the importance of that curbside service. So in speaking of reopening, I'm sure as you saw on Friday, the governor initiated step two of Phase Two. The headline grabber on that is in-house dining, indoor dining can now begin effective today, subject to, I believe, limited capacity, you know, six feet away from patrons, you know, COVID, COVID safety plans for every establishment. One of the things that we, we looked at, and actually Jeremy looked at the order and circulated that on our, our internal working group that we've been using to approve, review and approve outdoor dining. And we all agree that no additional, no additional, you know, application or review process is needed. But we will probably ask the establishments to send us their COVID-19 safety plans, just so we have them in case we get a complaint. We're not, we, MDP says we, we're not really allowed to require them to give them to us, but we would just ask for them as a courtesy. But that process will be even easier for restaurants to get into than outdoor dining, which we've tried to make, as you know, as easy as possible. If you're not currently offering outdoor dining, you still will need to go through that process to do outdoor dining. But if you're just going to resume indoor operations, you just have to fulfill the state requirements. And I think you're, and so restaurants are good to reopen. So I think for the rest of us, it's important to make sure we get out and get out, get out to eat, whether indoors or outdoors, so we can keep our restaurants and other stores, you know, going in this difficult time. And then, so I think, so one of the things that's also happening, it's, that was a major initiative that kind of took a backseat to the pandemic was the, and the work of the NMI StarMet reuse committee. They have, and it's on the, it's on the committee's page on our website, they have an announcement out for looking for feedback on some of, on, I think, on their recommended reuse strategy. And so they have concepts for consideration. I'm just looking at the document here. And so they have a series of questions that, kind of survey questions that they're asking for input from the community on that, like I said, that document is available on our, on our website. They're looking for that feedback by July 8th, because they're going to meet on the 10th. So for people who are interested in that, please go to the StarMet page on our website and kind of fill in the blanks, if you will, in the survey. It's, I'm looking at right now, it's very easy. But just take, it's a very approachable document, I think six pages total. So just take a few minutes to fill that out and see what they're doing and give us your, give us your feedback. And I think that's all I have.
Right. Are there any questions for the town manager, Jane?
I think that we are also, and maybe we talk about this later, but we've also been actively looking at, starting to do the outreach to community and town staff members on the Transportation Committee, which is a town manager committee.
Yes. And actually, I apologize, Jane, we talked about that maybe being on the agenda or not. I, I, so it's, it's not, but I will report that we, that I did, I did speak with Jane about this. And we have gone through, as you know, the, the board did finalize the committee's charge in early March. And so we're taking that and identifying the people that we, that we would like to see on the committee, both internally from town staff, as well as some of the community folks that we would be looking for. And so we've, Jane and I have kind of kicked some names back and forth and are reaching out to people that we think could be a great additions to that. And I would expect to see an invitation for kickoff to that, to that group go out here in the next week or so, once we get, we need to get some confirmations from folks. But once we do, I would, I would see that that committee would get started pretty soon.
Thank you. Linda?
Stephen, regarding the survey for the Nuclear Metals Reuse Planning Committee reuse suggestions from the public, I know you said that it's on the NMI webpage, but will there news and notice paragraph appear on the front page so it's easier for people to be aware that the survey is going on right now?
Yeah, I can have, we can start our news and notices on this. Sure. That's a good idea.
Are there other questions for the town manager? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is Chair's remarks. I just have very quick first welcoming Matt to the meeting. I'm glad he's going to be here with us. Appreciate that. Following up on the Open Table remark, I'd also compliment Crosby's Market in addition to the Lions Club, which is where the bin for Open Table is located. And also Crosby's have made it really easy for folks to contribute because they have prepackaged bags inside containing the kind of dry goods that is useful to Open Table so that you can just, you know, grab a, grab a bag and take it out and deposit it outside in the bin. I want to commend, as you recall, our last elections meeting, we delegated the authority to approve outside dining requests to the town manager. And I just want to compliment him, along with the Public Health Directors and Public Safety Officers and Building Inspectors for dealing with these applications very, very promptly so that these restaurants can get back open. And in addition to the restaurants to be driven through town, you would know that many of our stores are open. And so I would just encourage our fellow residents to, when they can, to shop in town, both downtown Concord and West Concord and at Nine Acre Corners and the Depot area to support these businesses that are, you know, having to incur additional cost just to meet the COVID-19 guidelines of the governor. So I hope we can all be supportive of them. And I would also just finally indicate that we find, we did receive a communication with the Attorney General's Office with regard to an open meeting law complaint that had been filed. And that will be on our agenda to discuss at our meeting next Monday. So that's.
Can I? So first of all, thank you for the comment about the towns, about town departments trying to process those. I should have mentioned that even though these things are opening up, our efforts to continue to support the local business community doesn't end with the governor relaxing the restrictions. In fact, in many ways, we need to work even harder now that people are reopening. And so there was a grant that I had mentioned, that the state is putting out a kind of a rapid action grant where towns can submit plans for improving outdoor pedestrian spaces, specifically to support retail and dining. And we are pursuing one of those grants as well. So we do view the need for additional spaces for pedestrians and for outdoor dining or outdoor shopping or storefront, you know, sidewalk style shopping to be available as they need, that is going to continue into, into the future. So we aren't taking the foot off the gas at all when it comes to trying to support local businesses. And I will put out the call again, if anyone has a specific need, please let us know and we'll do what we can to help.
Thank you, Jane. You're muted.
Yep. Sorry. Trying to keep the sound of barking dogs at, at, for everybody. I had one question about, you know, typically our summer months are seen, there might, standardly we see perhaps fewer Concord locals out, but we also get a much bigger insurgency of tourists. And I'm wondering if there's any sense of accommodations being made to anticipate the needs of those who do come and/or to make up for the lack thereof?
We've had some discussion about, is that a question for me? So Beth Williams, I know, and Marsha Rasmussen from DPLM are kind of, are, are co-coordinating our efforts broadly for economic vitality. And we've talked a little bit about tourism. I've heard anecdotally from some businesses that they are seeing people from out of town come in. I'm going to imagine stay trippers, because I don't think the hotels are back open yet. And I don't know that that's something we can accommodate, because it's not our, it wasn't the town's order that closed the hospitality industry down anyway. And you know this, it's more for, for everybody, for the viewing audience, as it were. So we haven't gotten into a big discussion on tourism per se. The focus has just been much more on keeping the doors open. But I think that as we kind of emerge from the shutdown, looking at ways to facilitate, you know, out of town visitors coming in and spending their money will be kind of a next, a next step, a next part of our strategy. But we haven't, we haven't seen a lot to build off of yet, I guess is the short answer.
Thank you. Terry?
Yeah, Stephen, that grant sounds really great. You said outdoor pedestrian space, that sounds like a really good thing to apply for. I think a lot of our businesses could use some help within that area and the town. So, you know, again, I invite any businesses to please contact the town manager's office and let us know if there's something specific that we need to be doing. So maybe we could put it in the grant. Great idea.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the town meeting update, Madam Town Manager.
Hi there. So first I want to report that a number of towns around us have held their, held a version of their town, annual town meetings outdoors in the last week to 10 days. And most of those town meetings have been fairly abbreviated affairs with maybe only half or a third of the customary warrant articles taken up and the rest delayed to a special town meeting later in the year, or with very liberal use of the consent calendar in order to move a lot of articles in a short period of time. By and large, the reports are that things have gone well and been orderly and people have been, citizens have been pretty forbearing in, in town meeting being not quite like it usually is. There are lots of lessons to be learned from other towns' experience, which I'm keeping note of. And I know our town manager has been to his own town's town meeting and has shared some lessons from that one with me as well, on things that we maybe want to make sure we're doing or not doing in order to run ours in the most efficient and satisfactory way we can for our citizens. So I had occasion last week to be out with Chris Carmody, our town meeting coordinator, along with the town manager and the deputy town manager and our facilities director and several folks from school facilities staff at Concord Carlisle High School. We took a good close look at the stadium and what that would look like as a location. And, and then we took, at the suggestion of the deputy town manager, we took a look at the Doug White Fields. And the consensus of everybody who was there was that the Doug White Fields were going to work a lot better for our purposes than the stadium would. The reasons for that are several. There's better electricity, there are physical bathrooms in a building up there, there's very good handicapped accessibility where folks with mobility challenges can park very close, not have to travel much of a distance to get to the meeting area. The surface is the same, it is artificial turf, but for some reason, the artificial turf in the Doug White Fields is 10 or 15 degrees cooler than the turf in the stadium. Maybe it's wind, maybe it's shade, not sure. But I think I mentioned when we saw the, when we were at the stadium, the ambient temperature was 67 degrees and the temperature of the field was 100 degrees at that point. So we can expect warmer weather in September. And I think that it would be a lot to ask people to sit on a 100 degree field. So we can, we can have, and, and there's not much we can do in the way of tents or watering or anything like that because of the limitations of the material on the field. But we've had some discussions about how we can help people protect themselves from sun. It would probably be much better to do this meeting in the daytime hours where people will be moving around on the field. There are lights on the field, but people have to get from the field to the parking lot and they might have to get down a long path to the other parking lot or onto a waiting shuttle bus to get to Alcott if they've parked in satellite parking. So that is all done more safely for people if we're doing it in the daylight hours than it is if we're doing it after dark. Also, if we're doing it in the daylight hours, we have sun to contend with, but we don't have mosquitoes. So it's probably best to do the nine o'clock in the morning option. I've been in consultation with the sports folks at CCHS. It seems that September 12th would be a, that's a Saturday, would be a day that they could manage and work around us if we were to take the Doug White Fields out of circulation that day. And we avoid, one of the Jewish High Holidays is the following weekend. And so we steer clear of, of that by holding the meeting a week earlier. So I would suggest to you that we think about September 12th at nine o'clock in the morning as our date for annual town meeting. I know that we've been working on how to trim down the warrant a little bit in order to expedite the meeting. I think, Mike, I know I've sent to you and the town manager my preliminary view of what could go on the consent calendar. My memory is correct, it's about 18 articles that could go on the consent calendar. I have, as we discussed at a meeting recently, made the rounds with all of our citizen petitioners. We have nine citizen petitions brought by five petitioners. And one of those petitioners feels that it would be reasonable to postpone their citizen petition article to a special town meeting later in the year. One has told me that no motion is expected, and that, that's on Article 31. I understand no motion is expected on that one. I haven't been able to connect with the petitioner on Article 48. And everyone else would like to proceed with their citizen petition articles at the annual town meeting in September rather than postponing. So it looks like out of those nine petitions, one can be postponed and one will have no motion. I don't know about Article 48 yet. And I'm not sure, Mike, where you and the town manager and the finance director and the finance committee are on what might be postponed with respect to other articles.
We, a couple of things. We have on our agenda for our next select board meeting, a review of all of the select board sponsored articles on the town warrant to make that determination. Matt Johnson's planning committee as a planning board has reviewed all of our articles and provided us with a, a single PowerPoint page indicating what articles could be postponed and which article they would prefer to go forward with. I haven't heard directly from the town manager yet, but my hope is that by the selections meeting next Monday, we will have the input from the various town departments. And what I will try to do, Carmen, is put together a summary of your consent recommendations, the responses from the citizen petitions, the response from the planning board, the response from the select board and from the town committees. So we have a comprehensive one. And once I have that done, then we will get that meeting squared away with the chair and the vice chair of the finance committee, committee, the clerk and myself, the chair, and you to go, to go with these articles. We had spoken, I think, also, Carmen, I can't.
I think, excuse me, Mike, I think I was also involved with that, that next step?
Yes, I just indicated the clerk and me as chair would be. And the other thing, Carmen, I can't exactly remember, but one of the petition articles, they weren't sure about whether they were going to postpone or not. And the question arose whether if the select board moved that any postponed citizen article would not require additional or getting new signatures again, but the select board would just voluntarily put that article on, on a special town meeting whenever it would come about. Is that something you think would be helpful to you?
Well, I think it would be very helpful as a courtesy to a citizen petitioner that agrees to put over a citizen petition, because otherwise, for a special town meeting, a citizen petitioner would have to go out. There's an argument anyway, that a citizen petitioner would have to obtain, I don't remember, it's 100 or 200 signatures in order to place a warrant on a, on a special, an article on a special town meeting warrant. And town council has advised us that it is entirely appropriate for the select board as a courtesy to a citizen petitioner agreeing to postpone an article, to simply put it, agree to put it on the special town meeting warrant so that the petitioner does not need to go out and gather additional signatures to have the article heard.
Without objection, then Jeremy, I'd ask you to see if you could put that as an agenda item on our next select board meeting. And I guess it would be correct also to point out that even if citizen petitioners are not willing to postpone their petition, that doesn't mean that those articles could not be in the motion to postpone articles to a special town meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, because it is up to the meeting what is postponed. Yes. Yes.
So hopefully we will be able to get the final input on those born articles at our next select board meeting. And then we can proceed to get that meeting with Dean and Mary, Linda, myself and you. That will be an open meeting. We won't be taking public comments, but it will be an open meeting. And I will just say that the purpose of that is not to make any decisions, but just to talk through where we are, see where there seems to be some agreement, because the next step after that, you will recall, following the town moderator's protocol, is for the finance committee and the select board to jointly meet and to come up with that list of articles that could be postponed. And the reason for the prior, the prior meeting is just that with the select board and the finance committee has 20 people. And that's just a lot if you don't have at least a proposed slate to deal with and begin with. So, so that sounds like we can, so September 12th, nine o'clock, Doug White Fields.
Yes. And our goal will be to complete the entire meeting, however many articles are on the warrant to be taken up on that day. And to go as long as we need to to do that. Most of the other town meetings that have taken place in the last week to 10 days have been able to conclude their business in an hour and a half. So we may take longer than that, but I think we're all going to want to be mindful of the fact that we're outdoors in the sunshine, holding up umbrellas to, and wearing hats to shield ourselves. So we don't want to spend any longer than we must.
Terry?
Well, first of all, Carmen, I just want to thank you again.
Well, first of all, Carmen, I just want to thank you again for diligently studying and pursuing this, spending so much time on this. We a town is so lucky that you're on this. I have a comment. I guess I like the idea of a daytime meeting. I like it outside. The whole plan sounds great. There is the trade off between mosquitoes and sunshine. September maybe won't be as hot as July, so that's good. I'm wondering about the nine o'clock start time because we typically have meetings before town meeting in a normal year. Groups like the select board, finance committee, planning board meet. So maybe they meet at seven thirty or eight o'clock. So you're getting, you're getting pretty early there. I'm just wondering if maybe the start time should be ten o'clock so that these pre meetings could be like eight thirty or I don't know. Or maybe the pre meeting should be the day before. I'm not sure exactly how to do it, but just wanted to throw that in the mix.
I think, Terry, the meetings we normally have before every day of town meeting are sort of to deal with the last minute stuff that comes up. But given where we are now, hopefully, hopefully, by the time we curate this town warrant from from whenever it first came out, February, all the way through September, we will have dealt with most of these things. And really won't have any last minute matters to do with, although, you know, one never knows.
You never know. And I've actually never seen a town meeting that didn't have last minute. Somebody always does something at the last minute.
Those come up at town meeting. And so Stephen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned the town departments having information for the evaluation of warrant articles. And one of the things that we're still waiting on is information about local receipts and the governor's numbers, which I think is going to drive a lot of the conversation of our evaluation of articles. I mean, I think we can, it's safe to say that we are going to look at our cash capital projects and evaluate those. And we're going to look at our line items, our budget line items. But it's, you know, and we are really doing that now. But I think it's, we don't really know what the what the target is, if you were, the threshold is until we have data that we're not going to have until, I mean, ideally, beginning of August, especially after the first quarter receipts. But when you say we may, hope we won't have any last minute adjustments before town meeting, I think the budget could be one of them because of the state's timeline on their budget. Just just as a cautionary note.
Yep, good. Well, I suppose, I suppose we could meet at eight thirty in the morning. I don't think that would call us kind of an off the cover remark or out of order remark. Have we heard anything back on our one twelve submission?
It got approved. I thought I thought we, I thought Carrie shared that. I'm sorry.
She may have. I might have missed.
No, we got it. It got approved.
Commander Moderator, do you have anything else?
I'm completely open to adjusting the start time of the meeting, depending on the wisdom of the select board and indeed anybody else who would like to comment on it for things to think about. And I've reached out to all of our public safety officials in town, as well as a bunch of town staff and the deputy town moderator and our head teller and our head ballot counter to gather input on the procedures for our certain to be ununique town meeting this year. So we'll try to have as much, we'll try to anticipate and plan as many issues as we can and plan as effectively for them as we can. But I'm sure there'll be hiccups.
All right, same.
One more question I just thought of. Will there be a rain date?
Well, you know, the, 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 there are four things which could cause us to need to move the meeting if we set it for the the twelfth. One would be serious rain. Honestly, a drizzle, I'd be prepared to have the meeting in. But serious rain, we would need to postpone. High winds, we would have to postpone. Extreme heat, we would have to postpone. And some unexpected second wave spike in the COVID situation potentially could cause us to need to postpone. So if folks would like, we can select a date to which we would postpone. Or we can wait and hope for the best. We can make Sunday perhaps the day. It's not an ideal day for people who, you know, Saturday is not an idea, an ideal day for people who worship on Saturday and have family obligations on Saturday. Sunday is not an ideal day for people who have worship obligations and family obligations on Sunday. But we could make it Sunday or we could, we can't make it the following Saturday because that's Rosh Hashanah. So we would, we would have to do something else. Perhaps the option would be to start in the afternoon and make it a late afternoon evening meeting. But I'm if 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 folks think it would be better to plan a rain date, we certainly could do that.
Good idea.
Carmen, the other night, there was a Hatz meeting and Lincoln had just done their town meeting. And they actually planned a morning meeting. I think registration was something like eight, eight fifteen, and they started at nine. But they also set a postponement date, allowing themselves some flexibility for later that afternoon, I think, beginning at one. And the reason they did that is so often, you know, there's, you know, a downpour in the morning, but it might be fine in the afternoon. So that was the first flexibility they built in. And then I think they did have the following day if they if they needed it. Now, for the major conditions that you mentioned, you know, there could be problems with the following day too. But I just offer that for what I heard the other evening.
Yeah. Well, that's definitely worth thinking about too, Linda. Thank you for that. One issue that obviously we have to take into account is if you make a last minute postponement, how do you get notice to people? And I think the notice is probably greatly aided by having a date planned in advance. So if people look out the window and they see it's a hurricane, they can figure town meeting is probably postponed and they know when it's postponed to. So that's one really good argument for having a fixed postponement.
I think it's wise to get it squared away. As I also recall, Carmen, were you working on a revised statement about town meeting? Laying out September twelfth, Doug White Wheels, Field, nine o'clock? Were you working on an additional draft?
Yes, I have a draft out there for comment. And I'm giving folks a few more days to give me comments. And it it's a, it's a, it's a fairly full plan of what the meeting will look like, what our protocols will be. But it has tagged to the end, you know, fifteen things that we still have to figure out. But I'm working on getting that finalized. And when it is finalized, I think I'll go ahead and have that posted on the town website so that people can begin wrapping their heads around what town meeting is going to look like because it's going to be different.
That was my suggestion. The more people understand what we're doing ahead of time, the sort of better off it's going to, going to be. All right, any additional comments, Carmen?
No additional comments, except that I'm at moderator@conquerma.gov. And if there are things that anybody watching wants us to have in mind as we're planning a town meeting, by all means, shoot me an email.
Great. I did see Diane, did you have a comment?
A very simple comment. Carmen, will you explain in the draft that presumably broadly circulated to town members and town citizens, how the voting is going to proceed? Because I've had a lot of questions about that from people. And were there to be the necessity of having a tie or some reason why we have to count the votes? I mean, it will all of that be explained in the protocol you present to the town? Thank you.
So yes, there are a lot of different ways to do that, Diane. And we have been thinking through how best to do it. We, we have public health concerns. We have logistical concerns. We have time concerns. And we're in the process of looking at what's possible. Because there are some technological questions to be answered before we can be sure of what's possible. So yes, it is my hope that the the protocol that I will put on the town website will walk everybody through what they can expect in terms of of voting.
Thank you so much.
And Stephen, I know you and Carmen have both seen town meetings. Have any of you seen an article that has required a counted vote?
Yes. And I don't want to step on the moderator's toes.
No, please, go right ahead, Stephen.
So I went to my own town meeting and there was actually a series of hand counts. And the one thing I noticed is because we were on the football field, like it's a soccer field, Doug White's a soccer field, but same type of thing, we're all, we're all spread out on field turf in relatively long rows. The counting took quite a while and added a lot of time to the meeting. And one of the things is, you know, it was a very non traditional meeting, a town meeting. And I think that everyone just needs to expect that it's just not going to, it's going to be a town meeting and we're going to fulfill the basic legislative function. But I definitely think it's going to look different than the town meetings. I've been to one in Concord, but the ones I've seen on video, there were no presentations and, you know, setting up projectors and screens and things like that. You can't do that in a drizzle. You can vote in a drizzle, but you really can't have those types of electronics out. So it makes, so the moderator said at the start of the meeting, if you have an amendment, text it to me, which I thought was a non traditional approach. And as I kind of observed all of this, I did see that electronic voting, which is something that I think I'm, was I think initially a cynic about, was something that I thought could have been a great aid in this situation. It's kind of a non traditional thing because I think there is a value. I will say that after, we went about two hours and it was pretty uncomfortable after a while sitting there. And so I think to, the hand counting did take quite a while. And I think to speed that process up will be good. And I smiled earlier because as I heard, you know, the moderator going through her list, I thought, geez, we're, we left pestilence off of one of the things that would maybe cause a need to postpone. I mean, just it's unbelievable times we're in.
Well, lots of good work by the moderator. Yes, man.
Yeah, if I might, just on on the subject of of voting, one moderator in another town mentioned that they wished they had brought binoculars to assist in the count. I would plan to bring binoculars. We know that I would need a raised stage. We know that if we're using paper voting slips the way we traditionally do, they need to be a truly vivid color. And I might want to have the deputy town moderator up there to cross check with me on counts so that we are really comfortable with those. And we don't normally do that. But in these unique circumstances, we might want to. The idea of texting an amendment, well, you'd need cell service for that. And I'm not really sure we've got it up in the Doug White Fields. We surely don't have Wi Fi up there. And we're current, so these are some of the technical issues that we're currently investigating. Can we get a hotspot up there of Wi Fi or cell service? Would the electronic voting clickers that we demoed last year actually work outdoors and not indoors? We don't know that. So there are a lot of unanswered questions that we're going to try and sort through in order to decide what the best method will be for us to use.
If I could just add, sorry, just on the voting, Terry, I'm sorry. One of the things that did happen was they, at some point, because of the time it took to count, hand count votes, then one of the subsequent ones, it was stand, standing vote like that, it's to make it easier. And I think that there are challenges with requiring people to stand up. And so I think in anticipation of visibility issues, maybe a seating area for people who for whom that would be a stressor upfront. And then, and then maybe building in some ability to stand and vote to make it a little bit easier for sight. But it's, like I said, I only offer that because these are things that, in my experience in town meeting, I never thought would be on the table as options. And it's just, and we have to just be very creative.
Maybe town boards and committees could pre record some presentations of their articles that could be reviewed by voters prior to the meeting.
Yeah, Matt, that is, that is on the list of things to work through. And again, there are some technical questions there about exactly how would we go about having those recordings made and posted? And they would need to be subject to time limits for presentations? And what is the timetable we would need to get all that done? Where would they be posted? Would it be on the YouTube channel or for Minuteman Media Network? But that that is one of the issues that I think it would be very good for us to address. But we have some technical questions to answer before we know exactly what our capacity to do that is.
Terry?
So just getting back to the voting, I'm a little bit confused because I seem to recall, Carmen, that you had maybe ruled out the electronic voting for this year. Maybe I'm remembering that wrong. And now it sounds like maybe you're reconsidering it. I'm just confused.
So the only circumstance for which we would really think about electronic voting would be in the event we need a standing counted vote. And we originally this year had been planning to do, before the COVID pandemic struck, we had been planning to have a two night experiment with electronic clickers to build on our experiment of last year. And then when the virus hit and we were thinking we might still have town meeting, but people would be very uncomfortable about passing an object around, we thought, well, let's never mind about the electronic clickers, not this year. But now we're in a situation where people are going to have to have something in their hands in order to vote. It's going to be a paper voting slip or maybe it's going to be a paper voting slip and an electronic clicker. We have asked the director of public health, Susan Rask, to have a look at the clickers that we would be using and to have a conversation with the company that supplies them to give us her views on how well they could be disinfected. And they're not bad, but they have some crevices around the battery door on the back of the units, which would be difficult to disinfect. But it would probably be all right if we had them a couple of days in advance of the meeting so they could sit and whatever's on them would would die, go away in forty eight hours. And then we would have masked, gloved people distributing the clicker. So I think it's doable. And there's so many things to weigh here, Terry. It's if we can save people a half an hour in the sun by going through some hoops to figure out how safely to distribute clickers. Should we do that? Yeah, I think we probably should. So it's just a bunch of things that are, that require a little more investigation and then some careful balancing. And again, I don't plan to do this balancing by myself. I am doing it in consultation with all of you, with town staff, with our public safety people and with the other folks who help with town meeting like the the head teller and head ballot counter and the deputy town manager and the town clerk's office.
Carmen, thank you very much for all the work you're doing on this. It's brightly appreciated and we'll look forward to talking with you again soon.
Great. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is committee appointments. Linda?
Move to appoint Richard Falander of three ninety nine Old Bedford Road to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
She's not here.
Oh, Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, oh, Ms.
Hi. Did you call my name?
Yes, I did. Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes four to zero with Ms. Bates not in attendance. Next item on our agenda is committee liaison reports. Who would like to begin?
I'll, I'll start with a fairly short, not a lot of committee meetings to report. I did have a Board of Health meeting. And really, as, as everybody here could imagine, it was focused on their responsibilities in terms of reopening restaurants and retail food stores, updating options for, you know, public health at annual town meeting. And, and then the, further discussing the Board of Health appointing police officers as the health agents during the COVID-19 public health emergency. So for those who have been intimately involved with this, none of, none of the discussion was particularly surprising. I just want to take a second to thank our Board of Health and our Director of Public Health because, you know, they've all been, you know, honored, honored necessary leaders in this entire effort. So I'm always, I feel very lucky to be able to be the liaison to that board, especially now. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Who would like to go next? I will then. I had the chair's breakfast. I was attended by about 29 people. It was a very good and robust meeting. We heard reports from all of the various chairs. So one thing I did ask was for all the committees that had matters before the town meeting in the form of a warrant to please meet and figure out how they wanted to view the warrant as essential or non-essential. And I've heard from some of the committees, still waiting to hear from others. I also attended a school committee meeting, but it was, my attendance was abbreviated because we, it was scheduled same time as our executive session meeting last Tuesday. That's my report. Who's next? Terry?
Okay.
Yes, I attended that chair's breakfast. It was great to see everybody, really good. Capitol Task Force. We unfortunately are in receipt of a resignation from Todd Benjamin, who has to resign for personal reasons. And we're very sad to lose him and we thank him for his very valuable contributions. And so we're looking for another member, a citizen at large for the Capitol Task Force. Please send your green card to Jeremy or to me or Mike or Stephen, anybody.
Jeremy.
Jeremy, fine. Okay. I attended the Concord Center Cultural District for a meeting for a while and then due to technical difficulties, it was the day the email seemed to crash and my computer crashed, everything happened that day. So halfway through or less, we were cut out. But I did hear some very interesting anti-racism activities that are going on around town. The library has put out a robust statement. Concord Art has put out a statement on their website and are doing a Black Lives Matter show later this summer. The Concord Museum is working with the Robbins House and Chief O'Connor spoke at a recent event there. And the Robbins House is also collaborating with Emerson Umbrella. On July 4th, they're going to have an event about Frederick Douglass. I'm hoping all these events can be put on news and notices because they're looking for some more publicity. And then I attended the Committee on Disabilities. One area they talked about was the library parking again. They, the library was there, Sherry and Jeff from the library trustees, they're resubmitting the onsite parking area to the HDC that they originally had for three van-sized spaces. So we'll see how that goes. And the other big item at that meeting was about people that have some hearing loss. It turns out that about one-third of all adults will experience some hearing loss in their lifetime. So Bob Andrews has put together a very strong support group for people with hearing loss at the COA. And they are going to collate info about all the town meeting rooms at Town Hall, at Kaiser Road, at Harvey Wheeler, and some of the other venues. And they're working with Kate Hodges. They're going to put together a lot of information about each of these meeting rooms and also better training to the public on what we do have. Like it turns out, a lot of people don't know that we have hearing assisted devices at town meeting. And people don't know that these are there. And so we need some more publicity about this. And finally, the Commission on Disabilities is going to send in some input and attend the, the Road Depot Forum that's taking place tomorrow. Because the thought is it's better to give your input now about the train platform before we start on any big design or construction project.
Thank you, Linda.
Yes. I met with the CPC. They reaffirmed their desire to have their warrant article considered essential on this year's, at this year's town meeting. Also, the applications for FY21 are already available. That notice is posted on the town website. And the, they're extending the deadline this year to October to follow our town meeting. So it'll give people a little extra time so that they can evaluate how things turn out at town meeting in their applications. Also, I mentioned earlier, I had attended the Hatz meeting the other night. It was very interesting to hear Bedford, who's planning their town meeting for early July, and they've done a nice job on their website. I checked it out to let people know what's coming in terms of format of the town meeting. And I'm gonna send that information to Carmen. It may be interesting for her to look at that. Lincoln did have their town meeting. They, they introduced having questions from the public handwritten on cards that were then collected. And they felt that that really helped in terms of the brevity of the meeting. They had quite a few warrant articles go through and one on a new school that was particularly not controversy, but took up a lot of time. But they did say that that was one thing they had done that they thought was helpful. Also, on their website is a list of documents that people should look at or presentations, but mostly documents for people to look at prior to the town meeting. And so there's some helpful format there, as there are probably on other town websites. The other thing, there was the Eastern, East Middlesex mosquito control represented there that night, reminding us of Triple E and it's mosquito time. And Concord does have a control plan for how we monitor that. I, I noticed that the governor has a bill right now in the Senate, may have already come out of the Senate, going to the House on issues related to mosquito control because there, it's very uneven in terms of what individual towns are doing. And, you know, this is a problem where some towns are being affected. Carla was one of them that was mentioned as being affected because a neighboring town isn't doing anything in terms of control.
Jane, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna add, because this was discussed at the Board of Health and the, the mosquito, actually, what, what was discussed was that while Carla doesn't spray and we do, that's one of the, the disconnects. But also that the estimation of when it's safe and when it's not safe to be outside is, is undergoing review. And so the canceling of, now, it, it's somewhat moot right now, but the canceling of nighttime athletics may be treated differently this year based on new document, new evidence about when the mosquitoes that we're most concerned about are in evidence.
Stephen?
I'm sorry to, to jump on this point, but DPH has, has had two webinars. I attended one of them. But I, Jane's right, officially their guidance and how they're looking at it and testing programs, I'm jumping in on this because Triple E is a big deal. It was a very big deal last year and went through it, as I recall, early on here. And so I think there may be different approaches from last year. And so if people are really curious about this, they should go to the DPH website and there'll be resources dedicated there. But it is, that is another revolving situation.
So currently, we're in the second year of a three-year cycle. And so, and because people are so focused on COVID and all these other regulations that we're trying to deal with, somehow this is not necessarily high on people's radar, but it needs to be.
Good. Thank you very much. Jane?
I was just to second that because outdoor exercise and outdoor activities has become a release point for so many people. That's where keeping informed on this situ, you know, on when it's really safe, what, what to put on, what repellent works the best and where we are in the, you know, in our knowledge base by us, Stephen said, going to the DPH website and also checking on our own Board of Health website.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. We continue to receive miscellaneous correspondence. Most of it has been aimed at issues surrounding the police, as Stephen sort of mentioned. And I, as I have in the past, continue to forward those emails to Chief O'Connor. He's been very good about responding on our behalf. Are there any public comments? Seeing no.
This is, yes, I have a public comment. This is Brooks Reed from 366 Estherbrook Road. I sent in a, some correspondence last night and I'd just like to confirm that you have received that correspondence from me.
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you very much.
It was directed at me. It seemed like it was just a copy of something you'd sent to the Concord Journal.
It actually had your name and all select board members' names on it, but four, perhaps the last three items of correspondence I've sent in have not been acknowledged, even as my neighbor across the street has had her correspondence acknowledged. So I just wanted to be sure you'd actually received.
What correspondence is that?
I talked about it several meetings ago and there's been some before that. I think at a different time I could bring this up with you separately offline.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments?
Yes, I have one, please. Tanya Galis.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Hello. Just, it's actually more just a clarification question. Did I hear it correctly that on the September 12th town meeting itself, it might be decided to postpone some articles to the special town meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to say something that the moderator already knows, which is that our articles about signs are, we, we just wanted to keep them at the same time as the planning board's PRD article to have the same crowd. And another that just came to my mind as I was listening is that when there is a special town meeting later in the year, it will probably be indoors. And this is just for any articles that are postponed. I don't know if that will be a safe gathering at the time or it will be iffy or everything else might end up being postponed to the following year or whatever. Chances are you have all thought about this, but it just occurred to me that there may or may not be a safe special town meeting later in the year for whatever purpose. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Sure, second.
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. It passes unanimously with Ms. Bates not being present. Thank you all very much for coming. Good night.